Thanks. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said Board SOAX is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So, let's go to Supervisor McNameer if you want to lead this in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the repugnant of its defiance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any introduction of new employees? Okay, seeing no new employees at this point. Any reportable actions to close session from County Council?
Not today.
Okay. Are there any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time? Okay. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Okay, at this point, we will now hear brief reports and announcements from board members related to programs, projects, travels, and committees. Supervisor McNameer, why don't you go ahead and get us started?
Okay, well, I had actually a pretty quiet couple of weeks except for the Fourth of July. And we also made a trip up to Jackson, California, which I didn't even know where that was, to visit my husband's relatives and brought home a sixteen-year-old grandson with us. I don't know how to entertain him anymore. He's staying for a couple of weeks. Anyway, I did enter in the Fourth of July parade, which was fun. I've always said that I would rather not do that because I enjoy more standing and watching parade with my family, but this time I tried to pile as much of my family in the truck as I could get in there. And someone was just discussing a few minutes ago, boy, I didn't realize how much candy it takes because it was within the first four or five blocks. We ran out, but I had kids throwing it from in the truck bed, and I was throwing it. So, I would do that differently next time, make them have smaller handfuls or something. And I had a couple of meeting with some constituents, mainly some of our blight issues. And it's mostly right now, this time of year, the grass two feet high on some of the vacant lots and people's yards even, you know, are considered fire hazard with the grasses growing so high. And I would like to apologize in advance for not being able to attend the harbor groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow. We received such short notice that I had a prior commitment that I cannot get out of. So, I'm disappointed that I can't be there and make my apologies for that. And I think that was about all I have to report today.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I had a pretty short, as far as meetings, a pretty short couple of weeks also. Did have solid waste authority meeting after the last board meeting, met with staff and some public members on some RS 2477 roads, issues that we're looking to maybe put into, put on some of the forest roads. Also attended Fourth of July parade and the beachfront festivities, and that was about it for me.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, thank you. I too have had a fairly light couple of weeks. At the Fourth of July, I probably cut, oh, at least four hundred pies at the Historical Society because we have pies that are incredible that people make that are really yummy, and we sell all of those. And following the selling at the Historical Society, I went down and did several hours at the Doughboy booth where people were standing in line for three hours at a time. And I would like to publicly thank the seventy-plus firemen who assisted with the fire at the Masonic Temple, which was a total loss, except for the Jobbs Girls have a handful of items that they find as their most important items, and that's their charter, their records, and their Bible, and all of those three things survived. My house has smelled like a fire for the last week because I've been drying out the record books, but we were able to salvage those. So, that was, that's always something that, there's always a little silver lining in some gray clouds, and that happened for us. I have met with a constituent on a blight issue and met with the blight officer, who he is on this particular property, and we will be dealing with that. I had a very brief meeting with Jared Huffman on Saturday. He came to, with his wife, to just introduce her to our community, and he was able to go fly fishing on Lake Earl and catch a cutthroat trout, which was a very exciting thing for him, and for him to see the beauty of our community, I think, is something that, my goal is that we're going to have him fall in love with this community, and so when he's a congressman, he will always know that Del Norte County is a very important place for him. The Redwood Park Association, we met with the Save the Redwoods League and agreed that we will be able to keep the Mill Creek Annexation open on weekends. And I'm hoping that that partnership will also include the county, which there are some ideas that we can do that will put us in a ground floor development on how we're going to keep that area open. And so, that to me is a giant step forward because I think that our priority is to keep our back country open, and right there where we had a threat of it closing, we came up with a plan as a community, and now we're going to be able to keep it open. Hopefully, the RPA and the Save the Redwoods League and the two-by-two of the county and state parks can all meet together and we can have the plan, knowing that those gates will be open for access on the weekends as they have been in the past. I have prepared for the Coastal Commission meeting, which I leave today, so I too will be unable to be at the harbor tomorrow. But on the agenda at the Coastal Commission is the Hobbs Wall Plan that staff is recommending no substantial issue, so it looks as if that's going to move forward, which is very exciting. And I talked with Supervisor Sullivan, and we are going to try to meet with the, with Layton, first name?
Tamra.
Tamra, with Tamra Layton and the Del Norte County Schools, and take a look at Glynn Street to figure out how we can have a walk, a safe passage to school on Glynn, much like the passage that we have on Eldorado, because the kids seem to use Glynn and Eldorado as their primary passage to school, which will also encourage them to walk to school, which is a health issue, so that's a good thing. Also, I met with, I was part of the Solid Waste, and I have spent some time with Tim Hoon on our culinary RFP that we're preparing. And it looks like what we want to do is have a semi-designed charrette to talk about the potential with different people, like with the Food Safe Council, with the Healthy Schools, with College of the Redwoods for classes, with Del Norte County Unified for classes. And I think that we're going to have a community meeting to talk about exactly what we want this RFP to look like. And that should happen in end of July, early August, and then we can get that RFP rolling and possibly end up with a culinary center that will train people in food safe certificates, which will train people in different classes, which will assist families in being able to have ways to cook different types of more healthy food. And so, I just think it might be something that can give a shot in the arm to how we eat in our community, and more importantly, skilled chefs that we will be able to go to their restaurants and have some yummy stuff to have in our community. So, that's pretty much what I've been doing. And then just had a great, great Fourth of July with my family on the beach. It was, for the first time where we go on the beach, it wasn't so much of a demilitarized zone. It was much more pleasant to not have to breathe all of the rocket air. So, it did work. There was a man at the area where we were that was actually ticketed, and, which ruined his day, his Fourth of July, but I think that it's something that, we do have to clean it up a little bit, and I think we took a step forward for this Fourth of July. And that's about it.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yeah, I participated in the Fourth of July celebration, I think, like everybody else, and had a great time. Noticed, probably attendance was down a little bit because it was in the middle of the week, but had a fun time with the communities, as well as with my kids. I had a tri-agency meeting, and aside from dealing with the budget, we also, there was some talk of purpose. And a little disconcerting in a way because we just had that planning process that we went through at tri-agency, where we engaged not only the city, the county, and the harbor, but also representatives from Brookings. And so, I think that's where the discussion also needs to go, is expanding tri-agency for a purpose, since it is economic development, maybe for a more regional one, in line with what Gary Milliman had to say regarding Brookings and Curry County, and economic development on a regional basis. So, looking at that, what was disconcerting out of the issue with the budget was, it's supposed to be a partnership. It is a joint powers authority, and to have one entity that is part of that partnership be deciding to cut funding for something that we all are vested in is extremely disconcerting. And there needs to be a higher level of communication between the elected bodies that are represented in these JPAs. So, you know who you are. Went to Sacramento, had a meeting with the Chief Justice and the administrative office of the courts. It was a good discussion. They are coming under fire of the budget issues as well as everybody else. Talked about how it impacts our local communities, talked about the impact that the sentencing is going to have on AB 109 with the prisoners now that are going to be in our jails instead of in the prisons, and how the judges need to be cognizant of that. While you can't tell a judge what to do within the administrative office of the courts, perhaps they can have some sort of training to show the impacts, not necessarily going towards sentencing. I mean, it's a fine line that you walk there. Anyway, very engaging with the Chief Justice. It was interesting. Now, here's somebody that is, represents the chair, the seat, actually the chief of the, one of the legs of our government, and was asking us from CSAC's perspective, what's going on with pension reform, thinking that we're the ones that are behind the scenes that are negotiating these things. So, it was a very subtle admission that the clout that CSAC has to have a Chief Justice thinking that we are negotiating the solution to some things that they have no knowledge of at the present time. That's not the case. I had a meeting with our staff regarding the proposed UROC compact, some of the off-site reservation impacts that are going to happen if there is a casino built in Klamath, and those discussions will continue. And had a NACO National Association of Counties conference call in preparation for the annual conference, talked about transportation and what should be on the agenda and some of those issues, including aviation issues, and that was pretty much it.
Excellent, thank you. Well, I also attended the Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, and there's some stuff on the agenda today regards to what we discussed. Had a meeting with Peter Penneykamp of the Humboldt Area Foundation, who apparently is retiring out here soon, but we discussed the Cal Endowment process that's been happening. I attended a lot of festivities for this week of the Fourth of July. I attended six performances of the Lighthouse Repertory Theater's melodrama that my son was in, and he did a great job with it. It's a lot of performances, so, anyway, it's always good to see that group get together, and the attendance actually increased as the performances went on. So, had a really, really good meeting in Smith River with a local organizing group, which is a mixed group. They also represent the Hispanic, part of the Hispanic community out in Smith River, and they really were looking for, it was neat to see, it was a grassroots organized effort, and I know Wild Rivers has been involved, as well as the California Endowment, to get them to take the initiative to use the process that exists. A lot of folks don't understand that sometimes it's as easy as approaching your elected official or your representative and saying, "We have a problem with this, what can we do?" And I think it's been a really good process, and our CAO, Jason Reno, also was in attendance with me, and he answered most of the questions, which was good, and I got to answer a couple. But it's a good start because a lot of what can happen in the outlying communities, as well as in the city limits, is if people organize, and a lot of it is a manpower issue. I know the county resources are extremely limited, and they're shrinking, and a lot of things can be done with community members, and it's just, it's a manpower issue. So, one of the big issues that they were looking at is recreational activities for youth out in Smith River, and it, I think there's some good things that are going to come of that, and it was, it was a hopeful group. It's nice to attend a group that they really were very positive, because it's not always that way when you attend public meeting groups. So, very, very good group. I'm hoping to see, we're having another meeting with them, I believe, in August. So, attended gender review, and then the other festivities. I have to pass kudos on. It's gone on for so long in Crest City, Del Norte, is the Fourth of July celebration. And there is a lot of work done, and there's been a lot of work in the past done, the Chamber Commerce in particular that has put the event on. It's the biggest draw to the county to bring people in, fill the hotels, and go that route. So, they turned out well, Supervisor Finnegan said. The attendance was lighter this year, and it probably happened on a Wednesday, and Tuesday, Wednesday's a tough, tough thing to do for a lot of folks. The deck party was really well-attended. Also, hosted open house at my office for the Fourth of July parade and watched the fireworks that night, which the city of Creston City, Smith River Rancheria, and the Chamber all pitch in for that. It's a great show, and it's nice to be able to see the fireworks because sometimes that's not always the case. Sometimes we see red and green clouds and have to guess what they are. So, the fog stayed away, which was good. On a lighter note, I got to be in the dunk tank for a half hour, and I didn't spend much time sitting. I was mostly in the water. And my kid, a lot of my money went into paying to dunk me, so go figure. It was a good fundraiser for Creston Oak Basketball, and it was, it was good to see, well, I think it was good to see people line up to throw balls at me, so that's great.
And I know.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people say that. And other than that, we, like Supervisor McClure said, we are planning to have a meeting with the school district and Tamra Layton from the local Transportation Commission to look at, it's a Healthy Kids Initiative to look at safe routes to school. So, there is funding available out there, and it's one of the few times you could say that there's actually funds available to put some initiative in place. So, we should have that meeting hopefully in the next few weeks. I'll be talking to our Superintendent Olson to further make sure we solidify that. And we do have, just to put notice, we have a joint meeting in August. What the date is on August with the city? Do we have a?
No, it's preliminary. It's twenty.
Preliminary. We, I talked with Eugene Palazzo, and we were talking about trying to set up a date that would work for everybody, so we'll work on that beginning now.
Well, and one of the ideas that has come up recently is making a semi-annual permanent meeting ongoing, instead of, you know, moving from, you know, term to term, actually just set in stone that we meet in end of summer and we meet in winter to meet with the city on just a regular scheduled basis. And the other thing is, I received last-minute notice yesterday that, on the harbor groundbreaking ceremony, and unfortunately, there won't be a full Board of Supervisors there because I know two supervisors have previous commitments, and due to the short notice, it's tough to get as many people scheduled there, which is unfortunate because the county's had a very big part in making sure that harbor groundbreaking happens. So, anyway, it'd be nice to have it a little better coordinated next time. So, other than that, I-
Supervisor Sullivan, if I could for just a second, you know, I mentioned the attendance was down, and I'm sure it was because of Wednesday, the fourth following on Wednesday, but I, so it's not misconstrued, I do want to put out kudos to Gina and the people at the Chamber because by far, the layout of how the beachfront park is the best that I've ever seen it in all the years that I've been attending. So, she did a marvelous job and needs to be commended for that.
Yeah, and I agree, because I'm glad they kept people off the street this time and put it on the grass. That's where it should have been all those years, so congratulations. Supervisor McClure?
I just would like to add that I also enjoyed the art walk, and the people that are putting on the art walk should be commended because it brings a lot of people out, and the artists have their wares out, and the businesses are open, and it was, it's just wonderful. And the new mural at the harbor is gorgeous, and it's almost completed. And one other thing that I was able to participate in was what is referred to as a tying ceremony in the Mong community, where it was a giant feast for several hours, and I was able to be one of the guests and learn great things about the Mong culture and the strength of the families within that culture. And I just want to say to the community, thank you for inviting me.
Excellent. Oh, and I do have to add the dunk tank. I would hope our CEO, Jason Reno, would do it next year because his daughter probably dumped twenty bucks in trying to dunk me, well, trying, dunking me, and so hopefully he'll extend the offer so my son can go up and dunk him next year, so. Or me, even better, yeah, that'd be good. So, okay, so at this point, we are going to go to, we are going to go to the, we're going to hear a brief report from our county administrative officer.
Over the last few weeks, administrative staff has been working on a few projects. One of those is the Point St. George Trail Project, and we have selected a consultant to do the environmental document for the trail. And because of time constraints and biological work that has to be done immediately, likely that contract will only come back before the board for ratification so we can get out and get those studies done, so we don't lose another full year. But it did come in under the budget that was expected, and we'll have a couple of extras as we go through it because of potential permitting processes. We're going to attempt to get the coastal permit as part of this and then wait on the other permits because the coastal permit doesn't necessarily expire, and the other permits all have expiration dates typically within six months. So, we're going to go through the environmental process and try to get it to the point where Phase Two would then allow for development. And this is actually the final steps for getting the project done that has been at least on my table now for over eight years. We've been working on it for quite a while, and the plan long before that. So, it'll be nice to see that document come in and hopefully get adopted locally and get a coastal permit for it. The manual arts cleanup work from the fire from some time ago is progressing. It should be completed soon. Most of that work has to do with safety within the building and dealing with some of the fire damage. But Parker Construction got the bid on that, and they've subbed out to a number of locals. And at this point, new railings, you'll see a new window, door going in over by the Building Maintenance Department to be able to solidify the building so we don't have people going in the building during the day and maybe setting fires like the last time. And hopefully that should be done within the next month. We recently received a recycled tire grant and have received the tons and tons of rubber chips that will be going out. This was initiated through the Healthcare District at the Wellness Center to get them some rubber chips for a new playground that they plan on putting in over there. And they had asked us to apply for it. The board ratified that several months ago. We were approved for it, and they delivered the chips last week. So, we have bales of chips sitting at all of our parks and have them available for the Wellness Center Playground, and we will be basically transferring out the, they call engineered wood chips, which are just basically wood chips, with the rubber chips. And it's a little safer product. The kids will bounce a little higher if they fall on this. And Jim Carnegie has been instrumental in getting all of this done. Barbara Drew is the one that's been working on the trail environmental and doing the bulk of that work. We're currently in negotiations with different groups. It was mentioned that the UROC Gaming Compact negotiations are underway, and there will be a reply back to the UROC tribe soon on that. The committee had met and gave feedback, and I'll develop those and get additional feedback before it's sent out. We've been in negotiations with the in-home support specialists, and we will be beginning additional negotiations with Sheriff Employees Association soon, and we've also been negotiating with the public defenders over a potential new contract. At the same time, looking at the different trailer bills that have come through, some that are in suspension, some that are in committee, some that are still being considered, some that won't be considered, and how those affect our budget. We have an action today that's a budget action, but in the meantime, we are waiting to see what our year-end will be, which should come in in early August, mid-August, and then implement plans from there. As Supervisor Sullivan mentioned, we attended a meeting in Smith River regarding the Recreation Department, essentially. I was representing the Recreation Department. John Horner, who is our Rec Coordinator, who works for me, was actually donating time to coach and prepare for the dunk booth. He was the one instrumental, person instrumental for getting Mr. Sullivan in the dunk booth, which was nice. They made a lot of money off of that one. And, but John's also coaching a nine-ten girl softball team that has won the two games. I think it was in the triple get today, and will be playing another game and have done very well. So, he's out of town right now, and we're, for that meeting, it was Supervisor Sullivan and I. I thought the meeting went real well. There was a very detailed process they went through to engage both Mr. Sullivan and myself, and what they're looking for is a drop-in basketball program as a start out there. And the youth pastor at the Baptist Church had graciously donated the gymnasium out there to be one of the focal points for the drop-in basketball program, if we could make that go. And it's yet to be seen just how many kids we do need, but we'll need anywhere from ten to twenty to make this pencil out financially. We also have the potential for using volunteers as gym supervisors or putting somebody on that is currently a county employee, part-time employee, to be able to look after the program. But we're proceeding with that, and we will financially, you know, as Supervisor Sullivan put it, Mr. Horner's our own- you know, as Supervisor Sullivan put it, Mr. Horner's our only full-time employee in the recreation department, and during the seasonal programs, he has part-time temporary help, umpires, referees, scorekeepers, and we employ a lot of people over the summertime. But to keep a program like this going, he's going to be needing some assistance, and we're going to need to make sure that it, financially, we can, we can provide the staff for the amount of money that we receive. And I think it can be done. It was a good meeting. I think people out there are enthusiastic, and the outreach into the community can be expanded to bring even more people in. So for that aspect, I think it's, it's got a lot of potential. And I'll leave it at that. Otherwise, the dunk booth, I was not able to go and participate when Mr. Sullivan was in, because I had, I was one of three judges at the Seroptimist Cow Chip Bingo. So I was able to send my ringer in, and she did very well, from what I understand.
Emma did really well. Plus, they gave her, her and every other kid, when they ran out of softballs, they gave them a basketball to hit the target. So, but I think Mr. Serena ought to make arrangements next year to be in the dunk tank.
I was otherwise engaged with another activity that I donated my time to, so I think that was a good candidate.
Okay. So at this point, I'll open for public comment. And members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding the matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will go ahead and close the public comment part of it. We had another timed item. Receive a quarterly treasury update from the treasurer tax collector and take action as necessary. I did receive an email from the treasurer last Friday, basically saying that she wouldn't be able to do the report for this because of the, of the late notice. So we will go ahead and move that item to the next agenda and anticipate her report at that time. At this point, I will entertain a motion to, to pass, or motion to pass the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to maybe have some discussion on item number three.
Okay. We, well, let's go ahead, you want to go ahead and pull that off then, and we'll discuss it separately?
I just have a few, or, you know, I probably should have caught this before, but item number nine, there's some insurance under the insurance. I'm not so sure, well, there's an "at" in there that I think should be an "as," but I was curious to know if this means that, that the solid waste management authority should be required to have insurance for the landfill. It kind of insinuates that that, to protect the liability, liability insurance, I'm not so sure that it is kind of insinuating that it shouldn't include the landfill, and I'm not sure that we've gone that far yet. So Kevin, do you have a feeling like that, I just see that you're out there, I'm not trying to pick on you or anything, but I'm not going to point my finger.
Yeah, good. The general comprehensive liability we have, that's-
But it says, and any other insurance.
Yeah, and I think what that, what that suggests is that it's, it leaves it up to the board to decide what other insurance is necessary, and I think if you adopt it as it is, the board still retains that discretion to consider that, the solid waste board.
Well, I just, I just, with that word "shall" in there, just kind of makes me feel like that there's something more, but I could be wrong. And anyway, just that one typo, I think it should be the amounts as it deems advisable, not "at," it is deems advisable.
Which, which one was that, Jerry?
Number nine?
Number nine, it says-
Page 12.
By such means and in such amounts, "at," instead of "at," it should be "as," as it deems advisable.
Ah, right. Boy, you read it. Nice. So I can fix that before it goes to the city. City has it next Monday.
Okay. Any other-
Anything else?
Questions, comments? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to, with the consent agenda? Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any public comment on, items on the consent agenda only? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't want to pull it for discussion, but under item three, and I understand it passed unanimously at the solid waste thing, so there's, you know, I guess I was a little, when I went through here, some of it seemed like it was dated. And what the intention was, of course, my overall thinking was, gee whiz, 99% of this could have been accomplished with an MOU or an MOA, except for the portion where the ability to bond and to incur debt, as for the transfer station. My feeling is, actually, if you really want to attack something, and I think I even said during the election, we need to pursue consolidation with the city on a broader basis, rather than just attacking it on the basis of the solid waste. But having said that, there, you know, there's a couple of issues on 1.3, and again, I'm sorry that I was not at the last meeting, but maybe for clarification, I understand the clarification here is that you want a couple of the changes, namely that each individual board adopt ordinances rather than having the authority do that. But there was, in the last part of 1.3, it says this includes, it talks about money, and it includes funds received from the solid waste benefit assessment and any funds that may be received from a sales tax initiative now pending before the electorate. Is there such a thing? Or is this dated?
It's, that sounds like it's dated.
Because I didn't, in the governor's sales tax initiative, it doesn't earmark anything for solid waste.
Maybe we can-
Under purposes E, developing, securing, adoption, and implementing ordinances and programs to control and prosecute illegal dumping and blight in Delmar County associated with solid waste accumulation and storage. Well, sorry, where in the hell have they been all these years? We hired a code enforcement officer to do just this. So-
We have that ordinance.
We have this ordinance, and I'm looking at it. I'm seeing, I guess is what I'm saying is there's things in here without picking the whole thing apart that are redundant, and if there is a separation of power, does solid waste, are they responsible for it? Or is there an agreement like with, with code enforcement? And I think code enforcement, there's an agreement between the city and the county separately on code enforcement?
Yes, sir.
And more than once, we've sat here and said, hey, why isn't solid waste doing this? And when, in fact, I guess they had the authority to do it the whole time. It talks about going back to a public member. And I say going back to it, because it's always been there, it's just that we decided that there shouldn't be a public member. And now, are we going back? We're going to eventually dissolve the 10-man board, which I'm all for, and go back to the five-man board. And I guess to that end, I see that, and this is my ignorance, that it's a joint powers authority, not just between the city and the county, but also North Coast recycling market development zone. Didn't know we had one. And who's the representative? And if in such there is a representative of that, shouldn't they be the one that is the public member, or take the place of the public member?
If I can address that public member portion, David, I think the reason that there was such a to-do about the public member was that that public member was part of passing ordinances. And now, we've taken that authority away, basically, and put it with the city and the county who have-
Okay.
Who have the authority to do that. So I think that was the reason, you know, for getting rid of the public member in the first place, before we had an opportunity to change the way the ordinances were put through, so.
And I do like acknowledging the end of that, just for 6.2, adding that any ordinance governing the board of solid waste must be approved by the majority of the individual boards. And then it talks about 1997, 1998 fiscal year study, dealing with characterization of market data collection and compliance, city and the county. Is that dated? I guess is what I'm saying, without taking any more of your time here, is I hope that this, since it went through nine to nothing, I'm not going to pull it and vote against it, but-
No, but we could, I mean, the suggestion might be, because we can actually, and this is where we, on the previous meeting, we didn't agendize a county meeting and agendize a city meeting at the same time as the joint powers authority, and maybe that's the solution, is to put it off until the second meeting in July.
Yeah, I just would like to see if we're really going to do this, let's not look like we're just rubber stamping something that was there. Let's go through and see what is timely, what's pertinent, what is duplicative, and really define what this solid waste management board is, whether it's an authority for recommending, or whether the real sole purpose is for the debt that we have out there, and the ability to bond and collect monies for the transfer station. So I'm not going to oppose this at this time.
But would you, are you suggesting that we push it off until the next meeting and do the-
No, because you already decided what to do. I mean, if it is going to be a work in progress, fine.
That's-
Because my ultimate goal, not pulling any punches, is consolidation of some of the governments within this community. There's too many of them. Because in some communities like LA, there's-
Millions of people.
Not only diversity of opinions, but diversity of purpose. And we have, I think, a commonality of purpose in this community, and it's that spirit of community and direction of community and economies of scale within this community and goals that are singular. And perhaps we really ought to get with the program and, and look at, you got a harbor district, you got a city, you got a county, you know, I wouldn't, some need to stay, like the school board and stuff like that, you know, and I'm sure fire districts and stuff like that. But at some point in time, we really need to look at what we're doing here and governance structures.
I think you're exactly right, especially if you feel there's some duplication of some things that are going on here. But I do believe it's a work in progress, and this is, this is basically a start. You know, without a start, you know, what do you-
You're the chair of that board, and I appreciate that answer, so.
Thanks for bringing that up. Well, I just think, I think it is a work in progress, and I think the way to get some of these things out in the opener, to look at them, and you're absolutely right. So, but, but I think this is a start. I think it's a pretty good start, especially dealing with the ordinances. I think that was one of the main things. And updating, you know, updating was a big portion of it also. I mean, there were some things in there that-
The address.
You know, yeah. Well, there were just some things in there that, that weren't current, and I think we fixed a lot of those, but there may be more.
There may be, but you know, just pull it and put it off for two weeks, there's always going to be something. And I think to acknowledge that it's a work in progress and continue to work towards it, there needs to be something in place rather than delaying it. Fine with that.
Okay. I concur. I, that's my thoughts, too, is it would be a work in progress. This isn't the final thing. So, okay. Any other comments on the consent agenda?
I would just like to say also, so with it being a work in progress, we can still continue to do amendments.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, moving on to budget transfers. Item 10 and 11, I'll entertain a motion on the budget transfers?
I would move to approve budget transfer 06-08 in the amount of $9,245 within the sheriff's budget, and approve budget transfer 06-10 in the amount of $5,000 within the county council's budget.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any public comment on the budget transfers? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board.
I just, I just had a comment about the GIS mapping portion. Is that something that we, that we share with our GIS person? Is this mapping that, that we can use for, for the things that we're doing with our GIS stuff? Is this something that can be integrated? Is this something totally different?
Is it part of the layering?
I think Dan is going to address it. No, I don't believe it's part of that, but the GeoCom system-
In reading it, I didn't think it was, but I'm just curious if there were some areas that we-
Sheriff's Department, GeoCom?
Yes.
We, yeah, they've done some GIS work, we've done some GIS work.
Dan, do you want to announce who you are, just for the-
Dan McCorkle, IT director.
Okay, thanks.
We do use their, we do use their GIS stuff and they use ours. It's shared. It depends on what, on what level they do. There's some private stuff that only the sheriff uses, but we've, we've used their stuff and it is on our system now.
Great.
In fact, the GeoCom uses the county's GIS servers and the GIS system. They've added layers on top of it. So whatever they do does go onto the overall county system. They don't maintain a separate system.
Right.
Since we got the IT director up there, I'm noticing that we got a screen up there with your picture on it, as we do with most people, but we don't have your name scrolling across there where you are.
Yeah, what's up with that?
Maybe, um, there you go.
I'm not up here enough, I think.
But since we do have you up here at some future meeting, in the next couple of meetings, it'd be nice to get a good five, 10-minute presentation on what the update on county IT is, in terms, because we did make a big change over on Gmail, and also the filming is now done on streaming through YouTube, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Okay. Jeremy, could you, any other comments on budget transfers? Jeremy, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, moving, moving on to item 14. Approve and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Rural Human Services for office space at Delmar Workforce Center. Good morning.
David Blatton, Director of Health and Human Services.
Gotcha.
This is our standard agreement. This is precisely the same agreement as last year in terms of costs for the workforce center, which is associated with RHS, and it's a partnership between our CalWorks program and the workforce investment board funding. And so together, we occupy exactly the same space there. We divide up based on number of staff, square footage, and this has been a very successful partnership. We've had this one-stop now for probably seven or eight years, and we have one of the best records of work performance for our CalWorks program, in large part because of this one-stop partnership. Most counties have this by now. It's not required, but most counties have chosen to do it because it works. So we just want to continue that partnership. Now, we have heard that RHS is looking for a new building, so it won't surprise me that sometime during this fiscal year, we might come back to the board with a whole new plan and new building somewhere else in the community, new costs, et cetera. And so we'll see what happens with that.
Which is the question that I was going to ask, because I'd heard that the lease was running out.
Yes.
And so this, this agreement is strictly with Rural Human Services.
Correct.
Has nothing to do with-
With the landlord.
Landlord itself.
Right. We're, essentially, we're kind of like subleasing, you might say.
Okay.
My life in another world was that, yes, they were looking for something, but they have terminated a couple of escrows, so I hear in the wind that they are successfully renegotiating their lease.
Ah.
Or whatever. I don't think they're going anywhere.
Well, who knows? Maybe that will even reduce our costs. We'll be curious to see. Thanks.
Yeah, any questions? Any public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on item 14.
I would move that we approve and authorize the chair to sign the agreement with Rural Human Services for the office space at the Delmar Workforce Center.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment. Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, and moving on to item 15. Consider miscellaneous legislative budget matters pertinent to the county of Delmar. Authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments.
Currently, the legislature's on recess, and we'll be coming back soon, but in the meantime, we've been receiving some updates in regards to some of the bills and where they stand. Many of those could be in committee. They, some of those have been basically gotten amends. There's a lot of them out there. I have about three pages at this point. They, everything from Senator Chesbrough's SRA legislation that's out there, and to some Brown Act changes. Right now, the SRA is probably the one that has the most significance to Delmar County. And we'll see, you know, we'll continue to follow that one. You know, there's other employee relations-type bills that are out there that not necessarily in the favor of counties or cities, but as the legislation follows, and we'll see what changes happen. There's a lot of changes in these bills at this point, and as I said, they're on recess right now, so we won't be seeing any significant changes for a couple of weeks. right now. So we won't be seeing any significant changes for a couple of weeks. When they come back, there'll be a flurry.
Good.
Just to help understand the process, you probably saw in our consent agenda, a piece of legislation and just how insidious some of this gut and amend stuff is, something that was air quality goes towards something that has absolutely nothing to do with air quality. And I won't mention what it was. So lots of fun and games in Sacramento. I'm glad they're on vacation.
Okay. Any other legislative matters?
Not at this point.
Okay, cool.
I should mention, and I'll probably report it on the next board meeting if we get back, is there will be a signing between Regional Council, Rural Counties, the State Association of Counties, BLM, and the Forest Service of the MOU. So everybody now has signed off on it. That ceremony will take place on the 23rd, I believe. So we'll be bringing it back. It's another tool in the chest.
Okay. Seeing no other legislative budget matters, we'll move on to item 16. Establish the positions outlined in the attached memo dated 6/14/12, or June 14th of 2012, from Gary Blatnick, Director of Health and Human Services.
The item that's listed before you was also listed as part of the recommended budget. There have been some changes or were some changes at that time. This corrects the previous proposal into the most recent proposal. And essentially, to go over those, there would be to establish four integrated caseworkers dealing with CalWorks, CalFresh, Medi-Cal, CMSB, and Path to Health, three office assistants and within those same programs, one mental health specialist, one mental health records clerk, and one office assistants within the Public Health Services budget. Director Blatnick's here for any questions regarding the financing or funding for these. These are all non-general fund positions in that sense. And for the need or reasons for that, he's available for any questions.
Moved uproot.
It's been moved?
Second.
It's been second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the Board. Any questions, comments? Okay, Jeremy, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay. And at this point, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Very good.